Well, yeah, it's really just instituted in the program because we don't have, we don't have the resident parking program. Okay?
See what we can get done tonight, Tom.
Yes, hope, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know it's over there.
I can't do this anymore.
Okay, well, I'll read it. I'm not sure. I have to see the final.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Michael Murphy. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. Dispense of the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A, correspondence received from City Business Administration on January 3rd, 2024 regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections as of January 2nd, 2024. Three B, correspondence received from the Department of Public Works regarding Rubicon updates received January 5th, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the third-party items?
Yes, I have a comment on item three B. So regarding Rubicon, the last time that the, I'd say, the administration or Rubicon was in to give an update, they said that they were going to have another rollout in January. Could we just get a date for the rollout in January or an update on when they're going to do that rollout for the month of January?
I'll do that, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you very much, Frank.
Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I do. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I believe, and I think Joe Goholey's here tonight, I believe the week of January 29th, there's going to be a PUC hearing on the Pennsylvania American Water Company rate hikes. I'm not sure if we have an exact date. Joe might be able to provide us with more detailed information when he speaks during fourth order, but just want to let everyone know that also the fact that so many people filed complaints, formal complaints, has caused the PUC to put the brakes moving forward with this rate hike. So I think that was a big plus for the residents of the city of Scranton and Dunmore. And, you know, that was through a lot of effort by, you know, Senator Marty Flynn along with state reps Kyle Donahue, Kyle Mullins, Bridget Kozarowski, and Jim Haddock, along with, you know, Joe Goholey and his group that are spearheading this. But I think it's important to note that we were the first ones to really start screaming about this thing, and that kind of got the ball rolling. So I want to applaud my fellow council members and actually some members and people that have spoken here about this rate hike, and I'm hoping that they hear us loud and clear. We'll see what happens. That's all.
Anyone else?
Yes. I would like to wish Captain E.J. Gallagher of Truck Two, the Truck Two captain, a very happy and healthy retirement. Captain Gallagher starred his career in 1981, serving the Scranton community for 43 years. Twenty-four of those years were served as the Truck Two captain and at the headquarters. So I want to wish him a happy, healthy retirement. And what else do I have here? Friends of the poor, in addition to the regular food pantries at Jackson Terrace and Valley View, I just, they just want us to remind all of you that the monthly satellite pantry at St. Luke's Episcopal Church will be open next week, which will be Tuesday, January 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Thank you, and that is all I have.
Anyone else? Fourth order? So starting a new year, so I'd like to update, we adopt our new council rules, so Attorney Gilbryd will update us on our rules.
I would just like to remind everybody, both attendees as well as council members yourself, of Article 5 of the Regulations of Council, Section 1, which states that no person, including members of council, shall use their time during citizens' participation to personally insult or attack any individual, name-calling, profanity, racial or ethnic slurs, discriminatory remarks based on race, color, religion, national origin, ancestry, or birthplace, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, marital status, or age, and any other behavior that is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of conducting official businesses shall not be permitted. The council president shall have sole discretion in determining if and when any persons violate these rules. Any person in violation shall be ruled out of order by the council president and may be removed from the podium and/or meeting at the council president's request. That's all I have.
Fourth order? Fourth order, citizen participation.
All right, first, Joan Hodawanis.
Joan Hodawanis, Scranton. First, I want to point out that today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so I would like to extend my thanks to all the police officers that serve the city of Scranton. They do their job well. Now, wasn't here last week because I was a little under the weather, and so tonight I want to start by commenting on the 2022 audit, which has finally come to pass. There's not enough time to go into too many details, but there were two items that had me on the floor laughing, and I'm sure they had you on the floor laughing, too. The first one is on page 69. It's Management's Note 21 on the Sewer Authority. You remember those guys. Quote, "The city agreed to share in the upkeep of certain stormwater assets with the Cellar," the Cellar being the Sewer Authority, "and Dunmore. Management believes such upkeep will be de minimis to the city." My question is, which assets are we talking about that are going to be de minimis to the city? In other words, no cost. This doesn't mean there will be no rain tax. I think, you know, this is a question you need to ask the business administrator. This is their comment. I would like to know what assets are going to be de minimis to the city for upkeep. That was a surprise to me. And then on page 98, corrective actions for item 2022-001. This was the lack of financial statements from the Scranton Parking Authority. Now, that has been going on since fiscal year 2012, when the parking authority went bankrupt. They've never done financial statements. Here is the corrective action as given by the city management. Quote, "The city informed the Scranton Parking Authority's solicitor in August 2023 that the independent auditor's report that it submitted for 2022 audit does not meet generally accepted auditing standards. The parking authority's solicitor was not aware of this noncompliance." This is after 11 years of noncompliance. "The solicitor informed the city that the parking authority will engage an auditor to complete a generally accepted auditing standard compliant 2023 audit and timely submit said audit to the city. Anticipated completion date, March 2024." And believe me, I will ask you every week, have they submitted their financial statements? And they had better. Because if they haven't broken the code after 11 years, I see no magic in year number 12. Also, the union contracts are still not on the city's website. For the firefighters, it's 282 days; for the police, 165 days. They're supposed to take 120 days to dot the i's and cross the t's, and Mr. Uffberg got paid again in the month of November, almost $5,000. Now, the overtime. I was looking at the police overtime. They went from, they had 168% spent on their $950,000 2023 budget. So in 2024, their budget will be 1.2 million for overtime. DPW admin was budgeted $3.5,000 for 2023. They spent 268, 268% of their budget, and in 2024, they're downgraded to $500. I want to see if they can pull that off. And with regards to the police recruitment incentive legislation, I can understand why they, they need a lot of overtime funding if they're at 80% operating strength with vacancies and injuries and retirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodawanis.
Marie Schumacher. I come to you tonight to ask you to do something that I've not heard done, but I'm hoping you will agree. Yesterday's paper, the, if you saw it, started off with the headline, "Officials Talk Tax Relief for Flood Victims." Now, if you recall, and I am, would put anything up, that if Joan Hodawanis had not come to this podium and told you guys what happened to her and her family when she was young and asked for this, it never would have happened. So I would like to ask that you can, if you can, make it the Joan Hodawanis statute when you, when you send it over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. First off, I want to piggyback on what I spoke about last week with the parking enforcement ticketing our citizens for parking the wrong direction on the street. When the school year started, I started driving kids to school in Dunmore back and forth. In Dunmore, I see a lot of cars facing the wrong direction on the streets, and they don't get ticketed. In Carbondale, I know somebody who lives there, they park the wrong way, they don't get ticketed either. But in Scranton, who taxes the city residents to death, now they're going to do, are we doing that? We ticket them for facing the wrong direction on the street, which is ridiculous. And as I said last week and many other times, the park enforcement people selectively use that rule. The kids that are causing safety hazards up at the University of Scranton, parking right to the corner so you can't see anything, they don't get ticketed. But myself, the park facing the wrong direction at my house, I get ticketed. I pay my taxes. We shouldn't be punished for facing the wrong way. I don't know what the problem is. There's a, no safety hazard facing the wrong way on your street, but parking right up to the corner so people can't see when they're at the stop sign, that's a safety issue. And the kids at the university are never ticketed. Moving on. Christmas week was on a Monday. My garbage is usually picked up on Monday, so it was supposed to be picked up Tuesday. Wasn't picked up Tuesday. Wednesday comes, wasn't picked up Wednesday. Thursday comes, it wasn't picked up Thursday. Finally, I called DPW. I said, you know, my garbage was supposed to be picked up Tuesday. Today's Thursday, still wasn't picked up. He said, are you on bull war? I said, yeah. So when he asked me that, I figured he must have got a lot of phone calls. Because how did he know I was on bull war? Finally, Friday came. Oh, no, he said, he said, I'll be up later in the day on Thursday. It never came Thursday. Finally, it was picked up on Friday. So I don't know what went on that week, but like garbage, everybody's garbage was piled up all over the place. It's, thank God it wasn't the summertime. But that wasn't right. While we're on the subject of garbage, last week, I saw their garbage recycling schedules here, so I got one for myself and my daughter. But people are asking me about them, that are they going to be putting people's mailboxes like they have been the last couple of years? Because not everybody's coming here to get them. The last couple of years, the mail, the mail carriers put them in everybody's mailbox.
So those went out? I don't know what week they went out, but they went out prior to last week. Because we had some questions about them that came out last week, because it was a six-month calendar that was sent out. So did you get one in your mail? I'm taking it that you didn't.
No, I didn't get one. No. I got one here last week, but never got one in my mailbox. And a lot of other people, I don't do neither. And at least, I don't know why they're making six months at a time. That's ridiculous. And about the opposing the water rate hike, I got a form. I filled it out, and I called the office to see whether I should drop it off or mail it to myself. They said, oh, no, drop it off. And the guy must have misunderstood me. He said, what's your address? I gave my address. Couple days later, in my mailbox, I find a whole folder of forms. So could I leave them here in case people want them? Because I...
That'd be great if we could do that, Les.
I gave to a lot of people that I know.
I think that the deadline has been extended. I'm not sure, but I think Mr. Goholey will fill in on that shortly.
Yeah, because, you know, maybe people, I don't know, if everybody in the building here filled them out or whatever they wanted to, I'll just leave them here. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. I still, I stick to my comment I made last week, though, that I still feel Scranton City Council is corrupt. And that's how I feel about the whole thing. But let's take a look at your ordinance here, Quality of Life. Let's say that somebody comes in and they're ticketed for, well, let's say, accumulation of rubbish. They go to the Building Appeals Board. They don't, now, in the transcripts, they call it a meeting, but it's really a hearing. And the person prevails. And when's the hearing? There's no accumulation of trash on his property, nothing. Why isn't he giving us feedback for the appeal? Why does the city keep it? He won the case. His money should be returned to him. I mean, I know that the city's trying to raise revenue, but to be honest with you, it's not the way you should conduct business. Now, the other thing is, okay, when your inspector comes out and reaches a conclusion, why are we even guessing? He should take pictures, leave one picture there and take one picture as evidence so that we know exactly what we're talking about here. Now, when you're talking about high weeds and grass, is one weed that's over eight inches high a violation of the ordinance, or does it have to be more than one weed? And you might think that's a trivial thing to ask, but I don't think it is. Are you talking about a whole yard over eight inches? Or can your inspector come out and say, there's a weed that's eight inches high right there on the sidewalk. I'm going to write a ticket for Quality of Life. Here's the other question. You can answer these if you want. Should the inspector show up at the Quality of Life hearing? Should the person making the accusations against the citizen in the city appear? Or should just the Director of Licensing and Inspections appear? Does the person who is being accused of something, because this is a court, does he have a right to have his accuser face him and be asked questions by the person who's accused of committing a violation of the Quality of Life ordinance? You've created this law. Does it follow anything that has any semblance of law? Or is it just something where you run roughshod over the citizens, because then they go there? And I ask these questions because recently, I had a Quality of Life violation, and I took the city to the magistrate. Magistrate in Southside quit the case because I've won every case the city's ever taken there. Okay? I had somebody in the Quality of Life, including the police, chief of police in Scranton one time, come on my property and say he could do whatever he wanted. He had a Quality of Life ordinance. They towed a car off my property, but they also brought it back because I went to the magistrate and filed a complaint for criminal trespass and theft against the tower in the city. And then I sat, I came and met the chief, because now he wanted to come in and talk, he wanted me to come talk to him. And he asked me not to sue him. And what I'm saying to this council is, it's all corrupt. You can't turn this city around by punishing the residents here. That's why I've taken the council and the mayor to federal court in ECTV. We're going to see what happens there. And that's why the last time your inspector came to my property, now we're going, the magistrate in Dixon City managed to meet, to, to rule where the testimony didn't support the verdict. It's not legal. The city attorney came to a hearing and didn't know why he was there, but my complaint was clear. And now I've had to go to the Court of Common Pleas because I find this government to be completely corrupt and without merit. And you have the opportunity to straighten it out, but you don't want to, and I don't know why. But you know something? You can't browbeat the citizens beyond a certain point, and the city's population basis went from 140,000 down to 75. And city government hasn't done a thing for the residents of this city in my lifetime. And sitting here with suits on and acting like you have any idea what you're doing is a crime in itself, because the residents in this city deserve much more.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, members of council. My name is Joe Goholey, and may I approach?
Sure.
Tonight, first of all, let me thank the Scranton City Council and the Borough of Dunmore Council for their interest in opposing the water and sewer hikes that Pennsylvania American Water is requesting. You guys have been great. Billy has taken a lead on this, and I'm very grateful for his help. Every time I call him, he answers, and I know all you guys have been talking about it, so thank you very much. I believe the mayor is adopting a resolution. I believe it's almost done and completed, and should be before you very shortly. I provided you with official complaints to the PUC today. A formal complaint means that you can take an active part in the hearing, which I believe at this point, as Billy suggested, will be the week of the 29th, and most likely on January 30th or February 2nd at Scranton High School. We're working on that right now, but they look like the two dates that are most important. I would urge every single council member, not only to fill out the complaint, but to testify at this hearing. I don't know how your water bills have been affected, but I, this all started with an 88-year-old woman who still works. Her name is Ann Harrington. And she approached me about a $100 bill increase in a month, in one year. And that was last year with the 70% increase that Pennsylvania American Company was awarded through an administrative hearing procedure. And unfortunately, the city of Scranton wasn't notified of this hearing or this settlement agreement. Dunmore Borough wasn't notified of it, so they had no, they weren't even at the table. So they kind of underhanded us all, and we really got blindsided with major league water and, more importantly, sewer rate hikes. You pay more now for your sewer to get rid of your water than you do for your water. It's outrageous. Secondly, it is a total result of the Scranton Sewer Authority sale. And if PA Water made a bad decision in buying the Scranton Sewer Authority sale, it's on them, not on the payers of Scranton and Dunmore, who are getting killed over this. We need to show up in unity. I have more complaints here for anybody of the member, and is it Wes?
Les.
Les. Les evidently dropped off a complaint at the office, which is right across the street. We're open from 9:00 to 1:00 every day, and then from 4:00 now to 6:00 in the evening. You can pick up complaints. We've had hundreds and hundreds of people come in. It's, it's probably the one issue that I've seen in my entire life affecting the local community that so many people have taken an active part in. So I would, again, urge council to fill out your complaints. You can drop them off over here, or, here's another thing, Les. We actually have people driving out, picking up, and dropping off complaints, because the seniors are the people that are affected the most, and they can't get out. So we've made it known, and I'm reiterating that tonight, that we will drop off and pick up the complaints. The most important thing you have to do here, you have to fill out two complaints, one for water and one for sewer. So you'll see two complaints there. So you'll see two complaints there. Now, the PUC under their brilliance have decided to make it one hearing for both complaints, but you still have to fill out two complaints. One for water and one for sewer. And make sure you have your account numbers on there, or they'll throw it in the garbage. I'd like to give you, in the public, our phone number over at the office that we have. It's (272) 892-1441. And it's located at 341 North Washington Avenue. Again, (272) 892-1441. I'm, I'm going to leave it with this. The people in the city of Scranton and Dunmore are being affected, but so is all Lackawanna County with the water rate hike. But we're being destroyed by the sewer hikes. And I don't think a lot of people realize that. I know I'm repeating myself, but the importance of that is astronomical in this hearing. We've got to go in and say, "P-A American, you guys made a bad business decision. Your lawyers didn't do their due diligence." And I'll give you a, a quick final thing. People from outside of our area, Berks County, filed the complaint, got a lot of other people to join into this complaint, went to the PUC and filed a complaint against PA Water. The judge said, "Settle the case." They settled the case on the backs of Dunmore and Scranton residents. Let's end it. Let's take part. You guys are the leaders of this community, and I respect every single one of you up there, because I, I know everyone except Mr. Schmroll, but, you know. And I would, and Tommy Gobright, a great solicitor. I would have him there speaking also on behalf, on behalf of Scranton. He can take an active part in the, in the hearing based on his position as, as solicitor. So I'm grateful for your help. Spread the word. Get your neighbors to call us for complaints. Call us, we'll, we'll deliver more complaints to you if you need them. And again, let's, let's, let's take care of this. Let's help the seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Goholi, and thank you for all the help you're, you're performing for the citizens of Scranton. Rick Little?
Hello, council. To start, I'd just like to establish one fact, that, that public housing in Scranton is a non-for-profit. Is, is that a fact? Scranton Housing Authority is a non-for-profit agency?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. In, in, in the field office for HUD, I've been told that HUD owns, by this, by the former attorney that owns Scranton Housing Authority. Maybe they do in some messed up, you know, maybe they're paying the taxes. Well, let me get to the point. They're rich. They have so much money. If we have housing problems, we should go to the Housing Authority to, to, to begin to address the problem. The problem, though, is that anybody who raises a question, that they own, they own everything. They own, they, they own the police, they, they are the district attorneys, they own the courts. And the courts, the courts are crooked, too. I mean, you look at the magistrate court, there's no record going back the 28 years that they've been doing. There's no record of the thousands of people that were made homeless by this court in, in an improper prosecutorial setup by the district attorney and, and the magistrate judge. There's just no record. I mean, there is a record of the, the complaint and the judgment, but after that, there's no, they have docket numbers, but they, the docket numbers don't go back a month, a year, 30 years. It's, it's, it's bad court. And I've been in that system for, for, I never thought I'd be living in public housing in a million years. But I went to family court, fighting for my child. I learned a little bit about courts and how absolutely crooked they are. It's the worst of the three branches of American government, the courts are the most crooked. And, you know, and I could go into, you know, the bar associations and how they got that way. I, I learned New York state law, but then I ended up here and they're evicting me all the time. Even though, even when I prevailed, they went back and evicted me. And, you know, I'd come, way before they evicted me, I go to the Area Agency on Aging. These people have them in their pocket. They have the Lackawanna Probono in their pocket. They have Northeast Penn Legal in their pocket. You know, and I complain that, that, you know, people are breaking into my, my room all the time. And, you know, they confiscated my stuff, they broke the lock. I called the police, the police say, "See the manager," and it's still locked up. And they're still doing all, all kinds of stuff to move me out as retaliatory eviction, mainly because I know what I'm talking about. I did right to know. I saw how much these people are making, you know. Carl Donat, as Executive Director, he's making almost $200,000 a year on top of his salary for the district attorney. I read in the paper, you know, and same with David Coyne. You know, they have dual jobs. And so it does no good to go to the court. I, you know, I've had to, I removed them from, to federal court the second time they took me to the magistrate court, about less than a year ago. The judge just ignored it. And then I'm running again, trying to learn the law. I, I got the appeal into Court of Common Pleas, just fighting my way. And, and then I had, had to do another motion for removal. And I hope Judge Moyle accepts it, because this is crooked as all hell, the, the court system. They know these people. You know from the newspapers with the church, the youth services thing with the district attorney and the whole thing about the police officers and the social workers. Same thing is going on with housing. And that's the problem with housing. You, you got to look at housing. You know, why are these people so fantastically rich? The old manager is Debbie Lutere. She's still working there on the salary. How do they afford to pay, pay these people? How do they afford to pay?
Thank you, Mr. Little. Your time is expired.
I'm done?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Wow, he got to go on two more minutes.
Well, that involved the entire
You wanted to hear from me.
City of Scranton, yes. Thank you. Mike Mancini?
Good evening, council. Mike Mancini, resident of the city of Scranton. The first thing I want to talk to you about this evening is something that was brought to my attention. And that's a HOP code. A HOP code. What a HOP code is, it's a highway occupancy permit. The Kaiser Valley Community Center has yet to receive this HOP code after the PennDOT had done extensive work to that parking lot and that water runoff. For three months, Sandra Opaschinsky from the county has tried to contact this administration for the HOP code, to no avail. This evening, that parking lot is filled with two and a half feet of water. Mark, you know this. You live in that area. Tom, you do as well. Mr. King, you've been there several times. Mr. Schmroll, Jennifer, you know that, that area as well. All right? This, this area has extensive issues with flooding, water runoff. And it is, it had to have been addressed prior to this. This never should have happened, right? But it did, and it's unfortunate. Now, a, a very good citizen of this city had mentioned about $5,000 that is going to be given to the, those affected. You know, we could have actually have given more money to those people if this administration had spent money a little bit more wisely. You know, with one of your, with one of your, um, excuse me. With one of your, your, stuck for words here. You know, I care about the city. And when you care about the city, sometimes your, your words stumble a little bit. You received addendums from the, the city of Scranton as far as what you do on a, a weekly basis. One of those addendums that you actually received was at 4:00. And it caused the city to single out veterans, $100,000. That money could have gone to those citizens, okay? Or how about money that was given to startup businesses where they've just taken the money and moved out of the city? Our law department did not set up those contracts properly. People just took the money and ran. You know, it's unfortunate. When we don't spend money wisely, we see a, a lot of things happen, all right? You know, I, I've talked about this park, Naug Park, for years. Most of us grew up and we have memories of this park, all right? Children don't have, are, and are able to share those same memories. We're down to two pools. You know, the Conners administration, 12 years, they did not close one pool. They did not add one penny in property taxes. They spent the money wisely, all right? From there, we went to the Doherty administration. With that administration, he paid the bills other than the union fees, all right? And it was shameful, all right? Now, this administration, nobody wants to work for this administration, because morale is at an all-time low. When you fire an employee and each of you received a 12-page report, Kristin Chizik, all right, the only one that was able to address this so far was Stacy Lang from Channel 16. I read this report. I want each one of you to comment on it, all right? Because the findings in that report and what I, what I read, for one employee to be singled out, for wanting to do the right thing, for standing up for this city and, and speaking their mind, when something goes wrong, just to be singled out and ultimately fired, is ridiculous. And she's not the only one. You know who else was fired? Marty Flynn's mother. 19 years she worked here in this city. Dedicated employee, caring, coming to work every single day, wanting to do the right thing. In return, she gets fired. You know how? Human Resources Director went out, knocked on the door and fired her with one year left until her retirement. You know why overtime is so much? Because nobody wants to work for this administration. It's shameful. It's disrespectful. And look at those pools. Those pools remind her more of Oregon than Scranton. And I guarantee you, when she goes to take that, those tillings out of those pools, she's not going to find a bit of gold. Not a bit of gold. It's shameful. It's disrespectful. We could do better. We will do better. I want those documents, and I want each one of you, when I'm done here, to tell this body and these citizens of the city of Scranton what you're going to do next. Mr. Goholi made a great point about extensive fees to water and sewer. Get accustomed to these documents. It's very important you do so.
Thank you, Mr. Mancini.
Is my time up?
Yes, sir.
Her five minutes are up as well. Good evening.
Can I ask one question?
Not, not outside, maybe, but not here. Your time is, is already over. Thank you. I, I'm, I understand that. That's fine. Yes, I do. Okay. Anyone else didn't sign in?
Good evening. Tom Coyne, Menucha. First on the agenda, I noticed we have a change to Contract 5D and 5E. That the city waives actions on the contractor, and the contractor waives actions on the city, indemnifying each other. The reality is, if something goes wrong, this sets it up so that the people can try to sue both parties. And each will point their finger at the other, saying, "It's their fault." And both will be claimed to be indemnified from any action. The sole purpose of them indemnifying themselves and their contractor is to strip the people of being able to fight in court for any harm that is done by these bodies. If the indemnification was really about the contractor, then may, there would be no need to force the contractor to have a liability insurance. Because what good is liability insurance if they're indemn from any issues? Continuing on from the last session, I touched on our right to know. And the right to know office, in my, in my case, the attempt to hide legal settlements paid by the people's money. Part of the request was based on the city making an undisclosed settlement, including pushing a new law into effect, having an executive session with council, noted as a legal issue when the case that was presented for the reason was already withdrawn from the courts and was pulled out of that body four months prior, as it was a negotiated settlement. As it was already agreed in settlement, there was no need for an executive session other than to hide the actions from the public in direct conflict with the Sunshine Act. Without the Times reporting, the public would have been blind to two settlements for abusing and weaponizing the offices of License and Inspection. Settlement using the people's money, though uncomfortable and embarrassing, should be open to the public. Payoffs and hiding it is an antithesis of good governance. The mayor's transparency stand, moving on to, was an early promise. Let's look back to Carl Dealey and his attempted, attempted appointment to the IT director. And eventually, when it was rejected by this body, he was moved into an IT manager with no IT director on top of him, making him the de facto IT director at that time in direct conflict of this body. At that time, the body approved a contract with Jessup's Bedrock IT Group on the assurances that they could make one system for Scranton governance and tie it all together. They evaluated, bid, and got paid $1,250 a month and eventually withdrawn after the process, saying, "We cannot do what we promised to say." Part of that promise early on was a walk-in terminal downstairs for this one-record system, so that the public could access in City Hall and view unified any records they needed. This never happened, and as a matter of fact, we can't even get into, into City Hall itself. And we have another thing creeping up now, is the change in the ethics form. I did a little research into that, and I understand that after four years, they want to do a campaign donation change. Maybe this should be considered after the next election for mayor, not right before it. It should be staggered not in election years, but off of election years. And the mayor is constantly pushing for parity with Redding, even though the median income there is higher. But if you actually take a look at Redding and their documentation, their numbers for their ethics are on parity with the city of Scranton. So if the mayor constantly wants to point to the city of Redding as a guidepost of what this city, a city should be, based upon finances here, maybe this city needs to follow that path and not increase the campaign donation through ethics. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. I know a lot of Scrantonians will appreciate your attempt to avoid the I know a lot of Scrantonians will appreciate your attempt to avoid the water increases. Last week, before 5:00 in the morning, I was going down Green Ridge, and I missed a red light. You know, there's no traffic, and I was thinking... In the meantime, when I looked to my right, where the library is, there used to be a sign, a big thermometer or something in front of it, where they wanted... I think the goal was 250,000. It was gone, so I was wondering if they made it or got some grants or something. And I didn't run the light in the meantime, if you're wondering, which was a temptation. This weekend, I saw the paper said you want to redo North Scranton. It's too late. It's too late. The school and the zoning board have allowed single-family homes to become boarding houses, and they're full of undesirables, because I walk once in a while when it's warm out all the way down the market street with my puppy. It's a bad situation. Every one of these houses has a driveway and a garage, and there's so many people, the sidewalks are useless. They park on the yard, make mud holes out of it where the houses around them might be well-kept. That's the first demise of a neighborhood, I believe, is parking on the lawn, which I guess it's allowed if it's your house. We've got some serious holes in the wall of the taxation. What happened about attacking the nonprofits? The last time anybody really did it was Janet Evans, and Mr. Volk told her to go to hell. You know, it's... Here they have that complex downtown that was unused, and the next thing I know, we were responsible for putting a roof on it. Am I wrong? That's what I remember, the articles in the paper. Unscrupulous developers and property owners are just taking advantage of Scranton's ignorance. The public is just... When you talk to people, there's so many low-income people that are really fearful of a reassessment. You people don't seem to realize the majority of houses in this city are pre-war. Mine was built in '35. I've had the plumbers there the last year, electrician last year. It's an old house. I've remodeled it inside. There's so much great expenses besides taxes that are causing people to lose their properties. You know, that's the American dream, but it's not possible in Scranton with the taxation. You've got to plug this hole up and attack these phony nonprofits, that the city's just full of them. They're reeking... We reek with nonprofits that are fraudulent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Good evening, Scranton. Dave Dobson, resident. You know, it came to my attention, and I have three already, blowing out old-style TVs. If we could get some kind of project, you had to pay the last time, and I'd be willing to pay to get rid of them before people start depositing them on other people's curbs, because one of those computer screens was deposited in front of my house. And my wife brought it in. I was a little cross with her on our property. It was in the gutter there, and it cost me $35 to dispose of it. There's somebody in the neighborhood that every time they have something that's going to be hard to dispose of, it gets finagled. I found tires and rubble, construction rubble, and so forth. So if we could end... It also came to my attention, I'm taken care of for recycling barrels, but we haven't passed them out in years. And people should be encouraged more to recycle. Okay. In going through my little rodent nest of papers, I'll pass this out to you, but I'm going to recover it again. 11-year-old, $20 million office building demolished in sign of the times. It's up in Oliphant, but there and again, I pointed out last week that the county gave them a tax abatement, so somebody from Scranton theoretically has to replace that money that they wouldn't have received from a $20 million building. And some other food for thought. In Los Angeles, which you see their homeless problem constantly on the news, 42% business occupancy. So this is what some of our Chamber of Commerce's and whomever decide to build all these properties, and they turn a handsome profit at it. And they disappear, and 11 years later, you have a $20 million office building. And by the way, any type of office property is usually not suitable for occupancy of tenants, because when you get that promotion, that big promotion, you get the corner office, meaning you have a window. So unless you really enjoy staring at the walls as opposed to sleeping along the railroad tracks in a tent, there you go. Now, on this quality of life, I had some falling out, not with the city, but with some of the people that were pushing it at the time, because I felt that all too often, you're staring at an abandoned calm dump out your front window, and that's what you could afford. And then somebody's coming by and saying, "Oh, you've got this old lawnmower. There's two tires over there." A bottle of water, a case of water bottles on your front porch. I don't know why that exists, situations like that. I really felt that quality of life should have a warning, give them 30 days. That's what I was given when my next-door neighbor had... I was in a multi-dwelling, and they had a lot of cars that they abandoned. So they'd drive a car for a while. When it no longer worked, they parked it in front of the house. Well, I had one that I used to switch the plates back and forth, and I got told about that. So, you know, I think it's time to at least ease up on this quality of life and make it more amenable, that people don't get treated like public enemy number one. You know, drop this off, if you want.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a few comments. It was mentioned about the nonprofits this evening. If you recall, back on December 12th, we did end up passing a resolution to hire Rudolph Clark LLC, who was going to go out and do a HUP test to evaluate whether these nonprofits who may have been approved 10, 20, 30 years ago, to see whether they actually still qualify as nonprofits. So that company was hired, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to go out and do a report, and then report back to City Council and to the administration and see. I think that's a good step in the right direction to address that situation. Number two, there's an individual who hasn't been here in quite a while, and I think deserves some credit for this Pennsylvania water, American Water Company rate hike that really brought it to counsel in the past and kind of helped get a kickstart, and that's Fay Ferrannis. I give her a lot of credit. She was hot on this issue early on, probably before everybody. So, I don't know, maybe Fay's watching. I just want to thank her for, you know, bringing this to light and really lighting the fire under our backsides to get moving on this thing. So she deserves a lot of credit for that. In terms of an individual came up here and made the blanket statement that we're all corrupt, well, I'll tell you what. Anybody can sit here. You want to say that we're corrupt? Well, first of all, tell me what laws we broke, where our corruption lies, and go to the district attorney, go to the state attorney general, go to the FBI. I don't care. Go to whoever you have to go to and report us. Get an investigation going. But don't come up to this podium and tell me, a parent of three children, who's a city taxpayer, who, we make $12,500 bucks a year to sit up here and do the best that we can, and constant phone calls, emails, text messages all week. And guess what? That's what I signed up for. When I ran for this, I understood that. But to stand there and call us corrupt? Good luck, because I'm not going to sit here and be called corrupt. If you think that we're doing something up here to break the law, then guess what? Go out and get us investigated. I don't care, and bring it out. But don't make blanket statements that we're corrupt. I'm not going to sit here and take comments like that. You're not going to come up here and tell me I'm corrupt. That's ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned. I don't have... Maybe this thing is wrapped up. Speaking of being on the phone on my way down to Harrisburg the other day, I got a phone call, and I've been in touch with Senator Flynn's office concerning the... It would be what Mr. Mancini mentioned earlier about the highway occupancy permit. I was kind of being an intermediary, trying to contact the administration to find out exactly what happened. I was informed that initially, when this was approved, the work, it was bid out, and the lowest bidder contractor did the work but never applied for a permit from the city of Scranton. So when they did the work, there was no permit issued, and now the state... Before we can go on to the state, we need to have the plans, and we need to have the actual permit so that our engineer can review that, and then it gets submitted. Because what will happen is, if our engineers sign off and we haven't reviewed those plans, then it's going to come back on the city. You know, we're going to falsely say that, yeah, we approved it. We don't know that the contractor followed the original plan. So sometimes, you know, all things aren't necessarily what they look like. I don't have the ability to open it up to the group, but maybe Mr. Smurl might have more information on that. That's all I know at this stage of the game.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster?
So I plan on touching on that tonight as well. I have some of the notes in here for that as well. I'm going to start with ethics before I forget it. I did bring it up last week, that according to our city ethics code, the campaign contributions had been raised. We did get a letter from the business administration stating that. After the meeting last week, I found out that, looking into the code, it can be increased every four years according to the Consumer Price Index. I, for one, though, as I stated last week, I would have been in agreement with keeping it as it is at this point in time. I didn't see any need to raise it from $5,000 to over $6,000. Next. So it seems that a lot is going on with the Kaiser Valley piece. This has been something in the works for a number of years, going as far back as probably 2018. I think some of the approvals came in 2019. But, and maybe some of the members up here know a little bit more than I do, I was an intermediary here for, between the Kaiser Valley Community Center Neighborhood Association, as well as the administration, to try to get this moving along. But Frank, can we reach out to the business administrator, Eileen Cipriani, possibly Don King, Tom Olesky, and get the definitive update as to what's going on with our highway occupancy? I know that the community center felt that they had their stormwater consistency approval that was approved by the city. Then this got pulled back, and now it's going into some kind of review. But it seemed that that was approved, and now they're reviewing it over again for the third or fourth time. So if we could reach out and just get, what is the definitive update as to what's going on with tying the community center project into the right-of-way on Kaiser Avenue?
I'll get that information for you, sir.
Thank you. Also, in the Kaiser Valley, I sent over some pictures of some sinkholes that were opening up on some of the roads over there, and one that was opening up in a yard. The sinkhole that was in front of the driving range in Fawnwood has been addressed for the most part, but another sinkhole has opened up a little further up. It is on the roadway. I was going to ask for an update, but we did get an email, I think, today. Was it today, Frank, that we got the email?
Today it was, yes.
So they're beginning to process that sinkhole on Dogwood Circle and Forest Glen.
That's correct. I'll follow up to ensure that it's repaired.
All right. Thank you for all the work on that, Frank. We got somewhat of a response on the recycling mailer. The mailer went out for our recycling. It was only a six-month rather than a 12-month. We didn't have any information on why coming into last week, but it appears that there may be some changes in the second six months of the year that may affect that calendar, so only the first six months were put out. So I'm hoping that that's going to be a positive for the city, although it's going to be two mailings. Last week, we did ask for a price of the total cost, and that was something that we had asked last year as well. So can we just ask for a total cost on the mailer so we know the ballpark that we're looking at?
I will, sir.
Thank you, Frank. Another question I had was, recently, the Scranton Housing Authority was attempting to give some monetary relief to the affected victims of the floods on September 9th. And as of yesterday, they decided to give $20,000 to the Scranton Area Foundation. I guess the Scranton Area Foundation is going to be a pass-through for some of these funds. Can we ask the administration why we're using a third party as pass-through funds, just to get the reasoning as to why we're doing this, rather than giving direct aid to those people affected?
I'll clarify that also.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Ossad, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First, I brought this up again last week. It's a complaint that I've received numerous times about trash and some quality of life issues along the alley on Front Street in Southside. And I received good news today that that has since been cleaned up and appears to be clean. So I was happy to hear that. Unfortunately, it does become frustrating when it takes so much time to get issues like this resolved, but I'm glad that it's been corrected by whoever the property owner is. I'd also received a question about the tablet cellphone tents that some people might be seeing around town outside of shopping. might be seeing around town outside of shopping plazas. I wasn't quite sure what they were myself, and I think it's attracting, uh, maybe like a low-income population to, uh, to those tents. And so, uh, Mr. Voldenberg was able to clarify for me today that, uh, code enforcement did look into, uh, into those tents and they are licensed to be there and that it also might have to do with, um, you know, maybe some sort of government funding program. Do I have that right, Mr. Voldenberg?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so if anyone else had questions about that, just wanted to, um, to make that clear. And, um, I know that, uh, Councilman Schuster had also brought up the DPW recycling calendar, uh, but I just wanted to provide, there are some additional details that I thought were helpful that were included, uh, and the, the cost which we had asked for too. So the cost for the list labeling, postage and production was $10,955. And, uh, they said that they had also made several changes, uh, to ensure more consistent delivery to residents and reduce the costs. Um, production of cards were reduced by nearly 10,000 pieces. Uh, addressing was pre-sorted for the post office. They leveraged a, also leveraged a recycling-focused grant to offset cost, uh, as this is an educational piece for residents. And adding the second mailing will help them to meet MS4 and recycling education requirements and also gives them some more flexibility during the year if we need to add things to the calendar further. So I felt like that was definitely helpful explanation. It seems like that, um, there's some cost savings there and I know we've, we've had a lot less complaints about, um, people not receiving it this year and there being issues with the mailing compared to last year, even though we, we had one this evening. Um, and lastly, I wanted to, um, bring up again the reserved handicap parking legislation, which, uh, our solicitor has already gotten right on, uh, which is great. So he was able to review the ordinance and he looked into ordinances from other municipalities, including neighboring Wilkes-Barre. Um, so it's not just fretting that we're looking at. And, um, and he found, uh, some interesting changes in their ordinances that could help to correct at least one of the problems that we're, uh, that we're seeing with some, some residents. And so I was going to allow him to further explain. And so this is not, you know, a decision that like we've made as a, as a council as of yet, but it was discussed in caucus and I felt like it'd be helpful for residents to know that, uh, this may be a possibility for, uh, for the city to improve on this legislation and to make it a little easier for those who need to use handicap parking in front of their properties. Solicitor Gilbride, do you have, uh, further details to add? Thank you.
You're correct. Um, as you know, council received a draft memo from myself in regard to the reserved handicap parking issue. Uh, it is, first of all, it is allowed under state law and the local governments are deputized by the state to perform that function. Uh, several municipalities around us, including the city of Wilkes-Barre, but several others as well also have these programs in place. I have spoken with several of those, uh, entities in an effort to determine, uh, problems they had with it so that, of course, when we draft our ordinance, we try to stay away from the problems they're having. So that ordinance should be presented both to the council and, uh, as well to the administration to make sure that we're not stepping on any toes in administration and how they're going to enforce it.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and one last thing that I wanted to bring up, uh, so for the, um, complaints, the formal complaints that Mr. Gilholy spoke to earlier, and thank you for providing us with, with the forms, uh, it is still, I also wanted to stress how important it still is for people to fill out those complaints, even though the POC has seemed to, um, to back off of the, the rate increases. There's still going to be a hearing and it's important to get as many complaints in as possible, uh, prior to that hearing so that, um, that they know just how much this is, this is going to affect Scranton. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oth. Uh, Mr. McCandless, do you have any motions or comments?
I have two quick things. So, um, I am thrilled tonight to hear in caucus that there's some leeway with this handicap parking. For four years here, people complained to me about it. Um, that, you know, I get to sign in front of my house, I pay a fee to the city, but I can't park in front of my house if someone else has a handicap plate. It's told by the city, you know what? That's it and that's it. That's the law. So, um, I am thrilled that, that Solicitor Gilbride has found, I don't want to call it a loophole, a loophole, I, I want to call it, um, a better way for our residents. Because like I stated a week ago or the week before, you know, there's one lady, um, I don't, you know, there's a few that reached, had reached out to me, but there's one in general that is handicapped. Guess what? You know what? And, and when she goes to the store, she has to park a block away from her house to carry her groceries in or, and this is almost on a daily basis because she lives on Main Avenue. So, uh, to hear, and I'm sure she'll be thrilled to hear, that, you know, there's hope. She's probably eventually going to be able to park in front of her house at any given time. Uh, and not take a chance going to the store where it's an uncertainty when she gets home that she can park in front of her house. I'm thrilled to hear this. This is great news today. Uh, and then secondly, I have, so last week, I'm just going to report out what I asked last week. So last week I asked the status on the city's street sign replacement project. I know it's a hot, hot topic with, uh, Ms. Jeffries and, and a lot of residents complain about it. And like I said, one of them had a great idea, I don't remember which one, but about the sleeves. So I asked for an update on the project and considered a newer method of utilizing sleeves that have been utilized in other cities. And these aren't cheap, they're, they're well-made and, um, and easy to produce now with, with technology that replace, just cover the sign. And, and I thought it was a great idea. So, um, indicating the respective street names on them, eliminating total replacement of the sign. So the answer I received was the traffic team does not have the capacity to install signs at the necessary pace. We heard that last year and that's unfortunate, okay? So, okay, so with that said, um, the city has procured a vendor to assist in installing the street signs. We know that too, but not much has been done. We've heard the same story two years in a row. Additionally, in September, a city applied for a multimodal grant for street signs and we are awaiting a decision by the state. Great, you know, I, I realize that these are costly. I realize, because we've heard that every year too, that we, we get some money, we start to process and it stops. So, um, I'm hopeful that, that we continue this project because it's, it's warranted and it's, it's a long time coming. Uh, so with that said, uh, they have not researched the method of placing sleeves over the street signs. They said that we can look into this as a possibility. I, I hope they really take a deep look because, um, every, every year we hear it's too costly and, and there's not enough manpower to do it. I think a sleeve, it requires less manpower and it's definitely cheaper. So I, I hope they take, take a good look at this so we can finally get all the street signs updated. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. I guess I will comment on the Kaiser Valley Community Center, um, the project up there first and the reason it is not tied in the storm drains yet. Um, it turns out that the parking lot was paved, but it was paved without a permit. So therefore the city cannot sign off on allowing anything to be completed up there until we have it inspected. So, um, the contractor was to be, came to City Hall, was supposed to be here today to have this completely finished, um, providing, um, all the documentation that is required. Now there is no, for any city property or building or anything, there is no fee for the permit because the city owns a property. Therefore the permit is free. Um, all you have to do is be a licensed contractor and do it properly. So, um, that being said, hopefully they were supposed to show today, um, and provide all that information. And if that was all provided, the city will release the numbers required by Pendot to tie into the stormwater system. So this is not the city's fault. This is not our fault. This is the fault of whoever told the guy, go ahead and do it, you don't need a permit. That is not so. You need a permit for every contract, construction that you do in the city of Scranton. That is over a specific amount of money, but everyone knows parking lots that have to be paved, you need a permit. So, you know, we can dance around this all we want, but it was done improperly, not by the city. So hopefully that has been completed. From what I gather, it has been completed, but unfortunately I, I don't want people yelling out through here without doing this properly. So I, I apologize for not letting you up here and just yelling back and forth, but I simply can't have that. Okay? Um, thank you. Um, the second thing I have is, um, 1326 Brook Street. This was to do with that bright light shining into people's houses. The city zoning officer sent a certified letter to that homeowner regarding the light in the city requirement for homeowners to adjust or shield the light shining directly into someone else's property. Mrs. Schumacher, the Beautiful Blocks Program, um, for the city administration, the funds from the budget allocated for the 2023 have been used and, and all of the 2023 projects are completed. The city has funded additional $40,000 in 2024. Uh, but more details in, will come forward, um, when Neighborhood Works, and I believe they're coming to council too in January. So maybe they'll roll out then what we're going to use that for. Okay? Um, the 1,700 block of Dixon Avenue, there's multiple requests for there. One is, um, it's next to a, uh, people live next to a senior living building that was just constructed. They reported to code enforcement contractor was be requested to enclose a propane tank to reduce the noise vibration, uh, or move it to another work site. Uh, I guess the city will send code enforcement for there. Large unpavement cuts on that block. DPW pave inspector notified and contacted a pair of Pennsylvania Water Company to review it. The water company advised back that the RLE, their contractor, will patch the uneven road and advance for a larger wastewater replacement by PAWC in 2024. Then the road will be resurfaced curb to curb, but not until then. Uh, they're putting a new big water main in there, so we're not going to pave it twice. Sidewalks not shoveled by a senior, uh, the senior building project. Uh, code enforcement was notified, uh, who either have a contractor, developer, to shovel or plow or maintain their sidewalks. So that was all taken care of. Uh, that's all I have. Mr. Voldenberg?
5B for an induction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency's Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Hazard Mitigation Program for up to $2,481,752.25 to be used towards the city of Scranton Property Acquisition Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question?
On, on the question here, I see that, this is going through PMA and I understand that. Can we get an, um, an update from the city about if we've reached the, the disaster cap for FEMA as well, Frank?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for an induction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the recruitment incentives for law enforcement program for funds up to $123,000 to be used towards the city of Scranton Police Department recruitment incentives.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor in, of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
5D for an induction, a resolution, ratifying the amendments to resolution number 335 of 2023 entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Borton Lawson Engineering, Inc., to perform city of Scranton's requests for North Scranton Stormwater Engineering Services to include vendors' suggested audits.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question?
On the question, um, there's a few times in the document that it, it refers to maps and none of the maps are included, so if we could just get the maps included in the legislation?
I'll secure them, sir.
See, if they were into, if they were included in the last one?
The previous legislation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All, all those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for an induction, a resolution, ratifying amendments to resolution number 336 of 2023 entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Borton Lawson Engineering, Inc., to perform city of Scranton's requests for Manuka and West Scranton Stormwater Engineering Services to include vendors' suggested audits. Edits, I'm sorry.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for an induction, a resolution, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license number 58619, currently owned by Calendies Cafe and Restaurante, Inc., and located at 36 Pike Street, Carbondale, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18407, to Warney Dalton LLC, located at 515 Center Street, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18503, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
I make a motion to table 5F.
Second?
There's a motion on the floor and the second to table item 5F. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow advertisement of, of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024 at 5:30 PM. On the question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, no business at this time. Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there are no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.